Adoption of Agenda for Regular Meeting. Under the provisions of the Public Meetings Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes a time, date, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, February 9th, 2015, at the Administration Center of 1005 Waterford Drive, Floris, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to four newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Do you have a motion to adopt?
I agree to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion to be made by Ms. Hogshead, second by Mr. Schrader.
Schrader.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Dr. Thurman.
Aye.
Secretary of State, what's on, Ms. Hogshead?
Aye.
President.
Aye.
Adoption of Agenda for Closed Meeting. Section 610.021 of Missouri law provides for discussion of certain agenda items in a closed meeting. Notice of proposed closed meeting, including the agenda item to be discussed, was posted. The Board, by roll call vote, must authorize holding a closed meeting and approve the proposed agenda by reference to each subject to be discussed. The agenda for the closed meeting is legal, section 610.021.1, and personnel, section 610.021.3, and negotiations, section 610.021.9. Do you have a motion to adopt?
I agree to adopt the agenda for the closed meeting.
Second.
Motion to be made by Ms. Hogshead, second by Mr. Brown.
Schrader.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Dr. Thurman.
Aye.
Secretary of State, what's on, Ms. Hogshead?
Aye.
And the President.
Aye. Well, ten months ago, we started this process of searching for a new superintendent. After 141 applicants, over 30 of them were sitting superintendents, we narrowed down to two. We held four different forums. Many of you in this room have attended, so thank you very much. And it is with great pleasure that we introduce Dr. Joseph Davis as our next superintendent for Ferguson. I'm going to give Dr. Davis a few minutes to be able to address everybody, say hi.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am just elated to be named superintendent here. I had an opportunity today to do a press conference, and, you know, it was a great time, but the highlight for me was the fact that we had the students with us, and they are so engaging. So I'm excited to have a chance to meet some other community people, know this this afternoon. Looking forward to meeting parents, community, getting to know all of you. So I just want to thank the Board for trusting me to come and work, because I'm looking forward to doing that work. And one of the things I'm really looking forward to, and I can say this, I called my wife after, we had the press conference this afternoon, and I said, you know, babe, it's even better than what it was when we were here last week. Because people in the outside world, if you will, don't really know, like, they hear Ferguson, and they have this old Ferguson idea, but this is a great community, and great people in the community, and that, to me, is powerful, because, you know, that's important as a, not just as superintendent, but also as a father of a son who will be going to Ferguson, Floris schools. So thank you so much. I'm excited about being here, looking forward to transitioning from where I am now to here, and looking forward to working with everyone of you. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. McClure South Berkeley High School teacher named among 2015's Global Enterprising Educators, Mr. Lawler.
Ah, yes.
Hey, George.
Yeah, that's center stage. Center stage.
Good evening. McClure South Berkeley High School marketing teacher, Dr. Raheem Mohammed, was selected by the Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship to represent St. Louis as a 2015 Global Enterprising Educator. The Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship's mission is to provide programs that inspire young people from low-income communities to stay in school, to recognize business opportunities, and to plan for successful futures. Each year, Nifty, uh, Nifty offices across the United States nominate a teacher who best represents their successful Nifty program and implementation. Dr. Mohammed will be honored at Penn Nifty's Global Showcase on Wednesday, March 25th, at Gotham Hall in New York City, for his successful implementation of the Nifty program at McClure South Berkeley High School. And I need to say at the end of closing, whenever I'm having not such a great day, all I do is walk into Dr. Mohammed's classroom, and within about five minutes, I am rejuvenated, I'm reassured that we're on the right track. It's a pleasure to watch you work every day. Yeah.
Did you have any family with him?
Did you bring any family with him today?
Uh, no, there should be bedtime right about now. Five-year-old and a three-year-old.
And this time, if Dr. Diggs, Dr. Shane Hopper, Jane Crawford, and Mr. Lawler would come up again, please, both three Ferguson Floris School District students and one teacher will be participating in the historic walking classroom meeting.
Good evening. I would like to have our students and our teacher and principals to come forward.
And their families to stand.
And their families to stand. Great partnership with the National Alliance of Faith and Justice, and through the events that transpired during the Martin Luther King Junior Weekend, which included a Clarity Roundtable to discuss faith-based partnerships, a Student Voices Forum, and the Justice Sunday Event at Greater Grace Church to promote mentoring and tutoring, I was given the opportunity to invite four individuals from the Ferguson, Floris School District to participate in an all-expense-paid trip to the 50th anniversary of the historic 54-mile journey from Selma to Montgomery. Also, during this timeframe, this will mark the 60th anniversary of the bus boycott. The four recipients of this opportunity are Ferguson, Floris School District High School students, Ms. Deanna Hopper.
Harper.
Hopper.
Harper.
Of McClure North, I got it, Ms. Imani Urban of McClure South Berkeley, and Mr. Von Ross of McClure High School. Along with their social studies teacher from McClure South Berkeley, Ms. Michelle Grisby will be on this trip. These individuals have been selected to take part in an exceptional learning opportunity during spring break, March the 24th, 20th through the 25th, where they will join more than 150 young adults in a walking, iconic 54 miles between Selma and Montgomery, Alabama, in commemoration of the 50th anniversary of the historic Voting Rights March. Through this immersive learning experience, the students will gain a greater appreciation for the physical and emotional toll such a trek took on the marchers nearly 50 years ago, and build an emotional and personal connection to history. The walking classroom stands to be a memorable, life-changing experience, where young people will call to mind not only the march for equality that occurred in Alabama half a century ago, but the continuing struggle for human rights that still continues today. I'm excited for our students, I'm kind of envious, too. My husband plans ahead, and he had already booked us on a spring break trip. Students will start by applying to Washington, D.C. for media coverage by NBC and a possible televised documentary of this entire journey from Selma to Montgomery. Board members, you have a brochure at your tables that explains this event. I'm very proud of our selection and thank you. On Friday, I will add, on Friday, we had the opportunity to fellowship with the parents, with Ms. Grisby, with our students. We had dinner, and we went to see the movie Selma with the representative from the U.S. Department of Education, Ms. Addie Richburn, who was in town, and who will also fund the trip with the National Park Association.
activities, events in the district that may be of special interest to Board members and to the community. So first up will be Mr. Eber.
Thank you. Exciting times, very exciting times. Glad to see everybody here. Welcome, Dr. Davis. Also, I always get kind of, oh, shall we say, talked to about too much rambling on this end of the table, so I'm gonna let these people share the glory on the great hire. I would like to mention Rob and Leslie, who worked tirelessly and really spirited the search. They were, well, let's say, I was loaded with emails about this and meetings, and they were like tenfold as far as the search and everything went. So I really, really thanks for both your leadership. Now, my little Liz here, let me give an update on the strategic plan. I am on the finance portion of that. And this month, the finance office has been updating the preliminary budget, which will be presented later at this meeting. The district, and that's number one, number two, the district has identified employees from each school to form the Employee Wellness Committee. Representatives from each school will be meeting the first week of March to discuss the vision and mission of the committee, and we will be working on a survey, which will be sent to all employees to help the committee develop a strategic employee wellness plan. You know, research and everything else, I mean, shows that, of course, you know, it speaks for itself, as healthy as we can all be, but it actually impacts the district tremendously, the healthier we are. So that is good news. Now, for my little journeys, I don't know who was at the meeting when Dr. Bland and Dr. Diggs and Nicole Whitezell gave their presentation about going forward toward accreditation, but a big portion of it was the Saturday Academy, to have our elementary children up here at the Probe Center, and learning in smaller groups, and really getting just, I mean, I speak from experience, because my son is at the middle school version, Cross Keys. And I came up here and saw the elementary, and it was amazing. It just is amazing. I encourage anybody who can get to view that, watching the children in these smaller classroom environments, which is another story for another time, trying to get the classrooms down. But it was just an awesome thing, and I really want to commend Dr. Diggs and the team, I mean, because, you know, we see these presentations, but, you know, to actually see the kids and the faces, and get out there and see it at work was amazing to me. And, you know, naturally, I get there, and I'm thinking, wow, if we could just blow this into a huge, huge, huge deal, and hopefully someday we can. So that was really exciting for me. The other thing I want to mention is, I don't know who was up here last night for the Probe Event, the pancake, Courtney, I saw you there, and I'll tell you what, that was amazing. I mean, lines out the door. I was kidding the Board members, I said, you know, we ought to get the pancake guy here, and we'd always have crowds, because this was amazing. Dr. Thurman was there, Keith was there, I mean, it was some great event. So Sheila and her team needs to be commended for that, I mean, to put that together, and then watching all the families sit there, and, I don't know, kind of be a family, eat together, play all the games they had set out, it was really, really encouraging. And last but not least, at all, is I think the best way we can help our new superintendent for anything he wants to do is, of course, the passion that I'm on, which is finance, is money. And we have Prop I, I'm on the campaign for Prop I, I'm the treasurer, and we have got to get this past $31 million. That's going to help our district tremendously, help our students. So I'm, you know, I'm out there on the campaign trail this year, and I'm speaking so much about Prop I, and so far, I have heard no negative on it, which is encouraging. So anyway, that's all I have. Thanks.
Well, the stakeholder and community report is part of the strategic, and that's my little section that I work with Janet on. And I was kidding her today, I said, you know, I don't like talking in a public venue like this, and always makes me nervous. And I said, that was funny, because flying on 747s to Europe all the time and making announcements, I still did not enjoy doing that. So anyway, you know, loosen up your seatbelts, I'm gonna try. So anyway, when it comes to engaging the community, and no one does it better than Berkeley Middle School, they have a project that's called Project Green Big, and it's currently in its eighth year. And what does this project do? It brings adults into the school to speak to the students about career paths, and it encourages them to stay in school, so these adults come in and talk to the children. On January 16th, 14 professionals spoke to more than 140 eighth graders. Now, I got thinking about that, and I realized that, I remember the eighth grade, and I remember the impact people had in my life. And what a marvelous thing, to have people come in that are committed to kids, at the same time have been very successful, and are encouraging them to look at their career path, and also to stay in school. Great program, Berkeley needs to be complimented for that. Now, on January 15th, several McClure High School students did an outstanding job at the Education Plus Student Summit on Race, okay? As reported in the St. Louis Post Dispatch, the McClure students, with a diverse perspective in mind, joined up with Parkway North High School, and discussed the current situation that has been going on in the Ferguson area, okay? That took place, and the other students from other schools saw them join up, and they, too, followed that example, and joined together and communicated in terms of that situation. My goodness, what we could learn from our children. And so I'm just very pleased to be able to say that our kids led that, and it was reported in the newspaper, and that was terrific. Now, Scott, or Mr. Eber, does it work? I mentioned Prop I, and that was something that I was going to mention, that you stole my thunder, but that's okay, we'll let you get away with that. It's a no-tax increase bond issue, it's Prop I, okay? It represents a significant investment in innovation as well as infrastructure. Get that, I. Prop I. We've spent a little time coming up with that, didn't we? Not that much time, but we did do it. Okay, we have seven weeks to go, and this is gonna pass. I'm confident. We're gonna work hard to get this to pass, just as we did Prop A. And I, uh, Prop S, yes. Oh, well, it was probably S, that's right. We were successful in that, and we will be successful in this. This is for our kids, and this is the sole purpose of it. And somebody asked me the other day, how many kids do you have? And I said, 11,500. And I said, and I love every one of them. And I think every person in this room feels the same way about our kids. And I want to pass this for them, because it's important for them, it's important for them. Lauren is going to be speaking at the North County Chamber of Commerce at the next meeting in regards to this, and we will do all that we can to help Prop I pass.
My part of the strategic plan is on academic achievement, and I would also like to welcome Dr. Davis to our family. And if I may, I'd like to steal some of your comments from the press conference this afternoon, because they ring very solidly in the ears of teachers, which I was for 33 years, and our staff. And if I can paraphrase, basically, you said, I am here to support our principals, so they do outstanding work, as they support their teachers doing outstanding work. And I think that is really a wonderful motto to follow, because that's really what we need to make it all happen. One of the things that's happened recently is we were one of the first districts to request a curriculum audit from the state. The visiting team just wrapped up, I believe it was last Friday, on the 6th. Kudos to all of our staff, particular our curriculum coordinators, the way they organize all those materials. The comments from the visiting team was, this was so well organized, and so clear and transparent for us to do our work. We hear the report, I think Dr. Diggs said the 20th, maybe, they'll be coming out?
It'll be March.
In March sometime, so we have to hear the results, but at least from the comments as they left, things are very, very positive. And I think we will probably come out looking very good, because I think our curriculum has always been up to snuff, getting it delivered and making it happen, and having the kids really take it home, that's a different problem. And another problem is dealing with state testing. I know we do a lot of work in emphasizing to our children and families how important this is, but we have to be careful not to raise the stress level. Anyone that deals with sports knows if you become very stressed out, you're not going to do your best. And so I hope that as we work with our students and our families, that we can get that message out, we need to chill, relax, and really do a good job. The second part of my report is dealing with what has been the Sunday Outreach Achieving Results Program that Dr. Diggs has started. We thought this afternoon she wants to change it to Strategic Outreach Achieving Result, because it's really not just the churches, although that's where we have begun. And we have, at this time, already placed 14 tutors assigned to our schools from this program of working with the churches, and I'm sure this is just the beginning. And of course, this comes at a perfect time for us, as we get prepared for the state testing in April. So I really look forward to that program expanding, and bringing more community into our buildings, where they can really see all the good work that's being done by our staff. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, Dr. Davis. We're happy to have you. The highlight of my month was going through the process of hiring a superintendent, being new, I'm gonna be able to stop saying that pretty soon, that this process was...
We'll be getting on the block after April.
I'm not upset about that either. But going through that process, I learned a lot. And one of the things that I want to say is, the experience was so wonderful to go through with this board. So the integrity, the, all the work that went into it, and I, too, want to say thank you to the two of you, because you all did such a wonderful job, Leslie and Rob, worked really hard, proactive and outstanding job, and they gave us two outstanding candidates, and now our one select person, Dr. Davis. We were gonna have a Dr. Davis, no matter what we did. So that was good. I am on the School Climate Committee, and I missed the last meeting because I was working, trying to get superintendent. So the importance of having a climate that's conducive to instruction is so important, and I am very, very excited about being on that committee. Also, I want to thank Gary Bills for all that he's doing as we're going through the Code of Conduct, and we're, yeah, we're working through that. Did you finish it?
Yes, we did.
Yes, wonderful, wonderful. Also, I had an opportunity to go to Justice Sunday, I want to say thank you to Dr. Diggs for all the work that she's done with that, and I was so impressed with the speakers, and especially Dr. Brenda Gert and Mitchell, when she talked about how we can use faith-based organizations to help our schools. So that was very, very outstanding. And then yesterday, I got an opportunity to go to the pancake dinner, and I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Ward for inviting me. It was phenomenal, and not just that the pancakes were delicious, it was the, looking around the room and watching the students and the parents, and we can have this everywhere, why can't we have this at every school? I mean, it was sold out, the line was out the door, it's a good problem to have. And I think when we talk about parent involvement, which helps with our school climate, it is an important factor in our district. We've got to get our parents involved, and get them engaged as well in what's going on in our schools. So I thought that was an outstanding, outstanding activity. The other thing that I want to say to you, too, is that I will probably not be making a lot of meetings for the next six to eight weeks. I am going into surgery in the morning, meet your prayers, it's back surgery, and I'm gonna be out for six to eight weeks, so I won't be doing a report and saying I, you know, I've been out in the district, but know that my heart is still there, and I will be in contact with the Board. And as a matter of fact, Rob has asked that we Skype into my hospital room. I said, no, the gowns are opening up, and, well, never mind. But anyway, just when I submitted your prayers, and I look forward to coming back and working with you, Dr. Davis, and the district. Thank you.
I am so happy that we were able to get the superintendent search out of the way before you went in to get your surgery.
Perfect timing.
Very part of that, and also very happy with the results of that search, that, welcome, Dr. Davis. Dr. Davis and I went to the Greater North County After Hours Get Together, and he felt right at home. They welcomed him with open arms, and got a lot, meet a lot of people in our community, and it was a great, great time. Glad I was able to take you to that, and he got toasted ravioli, and it was good. It was good, cannolis is good food. I'm on negotiations, along with Ms. Hogshead, and it seems to be going well, or... I'm on negotiations along with Ms. Hogshead, and it seems to be going well or making progress and moving along. So hopefully, end of the month, we'll get that wrapped up and go from there. Also on the Code of Conduct, that's wrapped up, ready to bring that forward. So that's good. My, again, my hope is that administration, the teachers, and the students will take heed to the Code of Conduct and take it to heart. And I think we'll have a much better, much better place to learn because that's what we're here for. And I'm on the facilities part of strategic planning. And I was informed this evening that we now have salt in our salt shed. So that is a great step forward. So it's, it's, it's... No, we don't need salt. You know, we don't need to go to a handyman and say, hey, I need 60 tons of salt. You got it? You know? It's nice to have it already there. So that's a great opportunity for long-term savings for us. And that's what I know everybody's looking out for. We're trying to create things like we did with the lights and now this, that not make instant savings, but make long-term savings. And so help us operate in the future. And we'll keep looking for those. I know that's what we're after. And Prop I, segue right into Prop I, is part of that. And the infrastructure part of Prop I is to help build new security entrances for many of our middle or elementary schools so that our kids are safer. Other kinds of infrastructure improvements that will help us in cost savings. I know Ameresco is looking at all those things to give us the best opportunity to do that. $31 million will help over the next five years to secure those along with the STEM school. I keep calling STEM, but I think we're gonna go STEAM. So full steam ahead. And speaking of that, campaigns do not run themselves on goodwill. They take cash, okay? The newspaper takes cash, the printer takes cash. And Mr. Ebert and I both have a coffee mug up here for Prop I. And if he would like to come to us at the break and give us a donation, we'll be happy to give you a coffee mug. So bribery works in campaigns. So I'm trying, I'm trying. And if we run out of coffee mugs, I'll make more. How's that? I will be happy to make a coffee mug for any donation that you give me. So we'll give it to Mr. Ebert, use our treasure, and we'll go from there. I appreciate any support we can get from the community to help make sure that this passes. We're gonna need probably between 3,500 and 4,000 votes because we have to have 54.7% of the people that vote in the election. And so it's not a simple majority, it's a little bit more than that. And looking at the historical data of elections like this, I think somewhere between 3,500 and 4,000 votes are gonna be needed. I'd like to hit somewhere between 6,000 and 7,000 houses with mailings, lit drops, we'll need help with that, for people to come out and walk the neighborhoods, make sure that this message gets out that it is a no-tax increase bond issue. I talked to people at Chamber tonight, and they're very supportive of it, so they'll give us some help. Talked to other groups, talked to Ferguson Forest NEA, and they're helping support it as well. So really appreciate their help. They're always a great help when it comes to campaigns. So I think that's all I have tonight. Thank you very much.
I'll start out by saying Happy Valentine's Week. I wanted to say to Valentine's Day, but it's not. Happy Valentine's Week. I hope all of you have a good week and are able to share your heart with everyone. And we will share our parents' hearts with you this week and tomorrow. This is also Black History Month, so I am looking forward to next month when you come back to us with several reports and all the talent that the students have shown this month. And I'm hoping that maybe some of the students will come and also share with us like they did in the past. And then I will promote March as Women in History Month. So we have two good history months, and history is my love. We had four outstanding meetings with the superintendent candidates, and we had some really good support from the community. There were a lot of people that came out and watched us and are watching, listened to the gentleman, and it was really, really good. I am on the talent strategic plan, and I can say without a doubt that the board has unanimously found talent in our new superintendent, Dr. Davis, and we are so glad to have you with us. And we know that you are going to take us to the top of every mountain. All right. Thank you very much.
Earlier today, we had a press conference to introduce Dr. Davis. And Jessica Bach with the Post Dispatch asked me what drove us to make our final decision with Dr. Davis. And I explained to her it wasn't just a meeting of seven minds, sit in a room, talking about it. It really began many months ago with the strategic planning process, with the survey that was sent out, asking for input in regards to the qualifications that you're looking for in the superintendent for our district. It involved discussions throughout the community, it involved the forums, it involved those comment cards. And so what we really wanted to drive home with this board and with the district was that the superintendent was the district for everybody, that the superintendent would be covering, we have multiple municipalities, and we wanted somebody who's gonna be able to reach across quarters of the community and integrate themselves into the community and really become part of our community. And so the decision with Dr. Davis just didn't rest with the seven of us here, but really rested with all of you in this room that participated in that process. So I just wanted to say thank you for your active participation in that. Typically, you know, I sit in here as the board president, you know, sometimes you may think, he doesn't do anything. But last night, while they're eating pancakes, I'm in a meeting with Larry. And so I do love being here, but I must admit that I have this extra step now, a smile on my face. These last several months have been, at times, pretty grueling, but it really opened me up, my mind and my heart quite a bit. And I think it made me a better person as a result of it. So thank you very much. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Green with the FFNEA, sure, prez.
That's why we need you.
Yes.
We need you.
Thank you. Good evening, board. Good evening, folks, parents, teachers, colleagues, shareholders, stockholders, everyone. On behalf of the FFNEA, I would like to thank and welcome Dr. Davis to Ferguson Forest. I'm looking forward to many wonderful days working with you, and so is the association. Speaking as an individual, I am thrilled that you are here. Thanks for coming to Ferguson Forest. Speaking on behalf of the association again, we are in the middle of negotiations, and negotiations is going well, as Mr. Morris has said. As I said before, it's always, I'm always looking for win-win. And we're getting closer and closer to win-win as we have done in years past. Also, speaking as an individual again, I can now see with things falling into place with the new superintendent that there's a light now at the end of the tunnel. And hopefully, the rest of the nation and the rest of the world whose eyes are still upon us will see now that Ferguson Forest and the community will shine again. You know, to paraphrase Bruno Mars, don't believe us, just watch. Thank you very much. One last thing. I would like to personally, speaking as an individual, thank Dr. LaRue for the work that he's done during this time. I just want to be the first to say that because, you know, it hasn't been easy, but, you know, he's helped push us forward, and I just want to be the first to thank you personally. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's perfect. I guess it's... All right, Dr. LaRue, you're up.
I'm pretty sure. One thing that we would request, if you have a public comment card, if you could get those to Jana or hold her hand up so she could collect those. That's one item. As Frank mentioned, the relationship with the FFNEA. There was the legislative breakfast with the Missouri NEA on January 31st. There are several significant issues before the General Assembly. We will keep monitoring these for their impact on us and on public education in the state of Georgia. And in years past, we've tried to put these up on our website. We will try to maybe give, put some updates, we keep those updates before the website so people will know where to go to kind of keep abreast as things will belong to the General Assembly. Negotiations, as was mentioned. This year, we hope to be able, our plan is to be able to bring the negotiations package to the board at the March board meeting instead of the April board meeting. So the goal is to do this before spring break this year, make sure that FFNEA membership has achieved the oath of gratification prior to the March board meeting. As Mr. Trader mentioned about the DESI audit of our curriculum, it's, it has been so positive for representatives from DESI as well as district representatives, coordinators, district staff, administrators, teachers that have been involved. That exchange has already paid dividends, I believe. So we are looking forward to the audit results. And we're confident that what we learn will give us what we need as we look forward. And so far, the comments, as were mentioned, are very favorable. The last item I have actually is to ask Dr. Diggs to share some information that she just received right before the board meeting. So Dr. Davis, you ready?
Good evening again. As we were preparing to come into the boardroom, I received a call from Ferlander Smith College in Little Rock, Arkansas, saying that the admissions recruiter will be in our district on February 23rd to offer scholarships on the spot to our students in our three high schools. On the spot. He also shared with me that what he needs for each one of our high schools to have when he visits us on that day is just their transcript and their test scores. He's willing to offer scholarships to our seniors to attend Ferlander Smith with a 3.0 and an ACT of 18. Anyone that wants to go to school, he's gonna try to make it possible with a presidential scholarship, with fees paid, waiving out of school to issue fees. And also students that have a desire, that have not met the GPA and maybe between a 2.3 and 2.5, he would try to do a partial. So I'm very pleased to announce that to our, to our principals and to our students and parents about this opportunity that just dropped in my lap today. So thank you.
The board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the comment period or the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out the comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board request to speak from the podium. Please identify yourselves. And in keeping with the district policies 4054 and 4059, and personnel law, should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, I may, the board president may make clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session.
Ms. Schultz?
I'm Amelia Schultz, and I'm a parent. I'm glad, actually, you've answered part of it. I was glad to see that tonight because I've been concerned, I knew that there's a tax increase, and I've heard nothing anywhere. And I just feel like our parents should, communication needs to get out last week or two weeks ago. Our parents need to know, we need to be able, I mean, that can go out through schools. It's always a problem, I think, we've had with getting things out early enough. And so I'm just encouraging you to get the Prop I out, especially to help people understand this head. People think it's on the ballot, it's gonna cost money. So helping them understand that this is not a tax increase, I think, is something people need to talk about. So that needs to be in bold letters in the note home. And the other one is, I don't even know if this has to do with school board, Missouri policy. I'm graduating my second senior this year, and they're allowed two college visit days. And I just, and I'm assuming, I don't even totally understand with the whole absence policy. I understand, what I think I understand is that if you have more than two, then that would be an excused absences. I just want to ask people to revisit that. I've got a child, I'm, he's auditioning for scholarships at four colleges in the next 16, no, 12 days, and we're gonna be missing more than two days of school. But this is, this is college, this is paying for college. And so I'm, I just would ask, I don't know if there's a possibility of having that be waived, if there's a way. Certainly, this is a kid who didn't go to lunch today, that was here to, for all of the seniors, all of the kids who have a four point because he didn't want his calculus class. So he's not trying to get out of school, but there needs to be something understood that, I mean, trying for a full ride is to be more important than getting an excuse absent. So, thanks.
Mr. President, I have a question. Do you want to move on?
Finally.
On Prop I, again, it's a no-tax happening bond issue. I've ordered 500 of those signed, so that's gonna help get out the word. But again, they don't run on goodwill, so any help would be appreciated.
Anybody else wish to address the board at this time? All right. Here we see none. We will take a short break. 10 minutes, please. Dr. Davis won't be available, he's staying throughout the meeting. So thanks, see you at 7:55. All right, well, thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and get this on.
Why is he alive?
I found to do this earlier. April 7th is our election coming up, not only for Prop I, but also for the school board. Are there any candidates for school board that wishes to say hi, introduce themselves?
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Courtney Michelle Graves, and I'm running for school board. And I have two children in the district, and I'm a product of this district. I went to Walnut Grove, Berkeley. When I say I love Ferguson Forest, and I love it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Donna Dameron, and I'm running for a candidate for the Ferguson Forest School District. I've been in the district for 23 years. I've always been an alderman for the city of Cool Valley for five years, starting early in 2000. So I'm politically, financially, and very well familiar with this. Cool Valley has always been my home, for my children too, especially Berkeley Middle, Ferguson Middle, McClure South Berkeley that my son graduated from in 2011, and I'm still a treasurer for the school. a treasurer for the school. And so I'd like your support.
Is that the justice?
If I start talking...
Mr. President, I would like to request a consent agenda item 9A regarding the January 14th regular Board Meeting amendment to the agenda.
All right.
So now I would like to move that we approve the consent agenda minus 9A.
Second. Motion made, Mr. Schrader, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All total, same side? None, ayes, ayes.
Aye, I think so. I just can't really think of what I have to do.
So, we'll go into discussion now for 9A.
I move that the amendments on January 14th be amended as follows. Policy 4034, Board Member expenses should state that only the recommendations of the Board Committee on Policy 4034 was approved. The adopted policy included with this amendment. No action was taken on additional language or board materials on January 14th and 25th, and thus was not amended.
Motion was made, do I have a second?
Second. He got it. Mr. Board is done. Just say Paul, the doctor said. Something like that. You'll do it.
All in favor of amending the minutes for the January 14th meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? All right, we're going to move into building level progress. Dr. Blaine and Twente.
Good evening, Board of Education. Dr. LaRue, Ms. Riel, and Dr. Davis, welcome to Ferguson-Floreson School District. And good evening to everyone. I have Ms. Androtti will come up. Ms. Androtti is the interim principal at Walnut Grove Elementary School. And so at this time, she is going to share an exciting time event at Walnut Grove. She's been there a short time since January, and she has been working extremely hard during that short time. So at this time, Ms. Androtti.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. I'm nervous, so I talk fast when I'm nervous. But before I get started, I want to talk about the collaborative culture at Walnut Grove, and I can't talk about that without talking about the Walnut Grove staff. So I asked them if they would come out in support of me this evening. So will you guys all stand up so we can recognize how many staff members came out tonight? These amazing people are dedicated. They didn't just come to the Board Meeting at 7 o'clock tonight from their homes, they came to the Board Meeting, and they had to leave their classrooms where they were working at to come here tonight because there are many times there are 7, 8, 9 o'clock at night right along with me. And we are really making a lot of efforts to move Walnut Grove forward in our climate. One of the things that we're working on is reinstating the PBIS program there at Walnut Grove, including class meetings and school-wide assemblies and PTOs. So I'm going to talk to you about a few of those pieces. Emma? Hit the right arrow. All right, so the class meetings, they happen weekly, two times a week. We start the week with a class meeting. The entire school in their classes sit down and have a meeting. And this was supposed to be a movie of about 45 pictures of the class meetings, but it's not going to play for us this evening. But what you would have seen was phenomenal teaching going on and amazing students that are working on different subject letters. We've been creating a rainbow plan in our building, and that plan is developed to come up with ways to positively reinforce behavior and to take away the, a negative approach to try and really encourage children to make good choices, and also create a building uniformity. So that rainbow plan is a graduating plan for students to show that they know what it's like to be a Walnut Grove fair and have phenomenal behavior. We've been using common language and signals and teaching the students those since January 5th, and we're tailoring lessons to meet the needs of our population. So right now, many of those lessons that we've been focusing on are things like the foodie, keeping your hands clean, all other objects and unkind words to yourself, working on voice volume, and building white signals and hand signals to let students know what we are expecting from them. We've also been working on kindness and bullying and how to treat one another. And with the class meetings, they meet at a midweek point as well to touch base again, to come back and remind the kids where we're at and reteach, refocus, and relearn the expectations. Because with PBIS, the only way to do this is consistently reteaching and modeling that behavior for our students. I'm just pushing buttons here. All right, I'll push the right one. So we did have our first school-wide assembly, so you see the lovely children sitting here at our first assembly, and the first one was on bullying. And we pulled out a book from author Judy Ludwig along with a bullying lesson. We read the book, we talked about it, and then from there, the students went back and talked about what is happening in their classrooms and their experiencing and how it makes them feel. And they learned the difference between teasing and taunting, and what makes, how it makes people feel. And a lot of conversations happened within that piece, in that classroom, that really opened up and let the teachers in on things that were going on, let the students in that the teachers are there, we love them, and they're really feeling a piece of a family at Walnut Grove. And that's truly the move that we're moving to, is that family aspect. Again, just pushing buttons. One more piece that we did, and this giant number 20 is huge for us, we sent out the school reach glasses. You guys know you get only about four or five a week on those, and they inform us of so many fabulous things going on. So we sent out a school glass and asked all our parents to come up and meet the new principal. And when they came up, we told them about our new programs that are going on and everything that we're having. We had 25 families show up, and of the 25 families, 20 registered on the spot and are now members of our PTO, which is Fresh Report. That 20 is a huge number. We immediately got their email addresses, started talking with them immediately, and they're already starting a fundraiser. And to, my focus is to kind of stay off of the unhealthy foods, so we're doing a fundraiser for a read-a-thon. So if you get a Walnut Grove student approaching you wanting YouTube, pledge, or how many books they're going to read, please pledge. And we're going to be getting that off the ground. They're going to meet again on February 24th to make that happen and elect officers. So we've got a lot of great going on. I thank you for your time, and hey, stop by. Come see what we're doing.
She says 20 members. Can you just give them a baseline? Where did you start with?
It was completely formed from the ground. There hasn't been an active PTO at Walnut Grove for many years, and so we needed to restate that because that parent-community connection is huge. And if we don't open the door to the parents and say, "Come in, talk to us, tell us what's going on," then they're not going to be as responsive when we call and tell them what we need support with. And it has been huge. The parents call me every day to tell me, "Oh, I really like the way we're dismissing now, the bus line's moving faster." And they also feel comfortable to call and say, "Hey, Ms. Androtti, this happened. I need to know what's going on," and have those conversations. And so we're doing that. And the teachers are reaching out, calling constantly, and it's really opened a school home connection for Walnut Grove.
Thank you, Ms. Androtti, and thank you to the Walnut Grove staff. Dr. Ice from Robinwood Elementary School will come this time.
I'd like to say thank you, Board, for the opportunity for me to share some of the events that we have going on at Robinwood, and welcome Dr. Davis again to this wonderful Ferguson-Floreson family. I would like to also start out by introducing my wonderful Robinwood staff. So if you would please stand, I would appreciate it. Not only do I have certified staff, I also have support staff, so I appreciate that. And they're not only just coming out to support the fact that I'm giving a presentation on programs that we have at our school, but they're supporting the vision and the mission that we have at Robinwood, which is to impact our students, to prepare them to be global citizens in this world. I am going to share a few things, a little bit different. I know that I can focus on an academic focus, but we have been so rigorous with what we're doing in our school with new initiatives this year. I wanted to take an opportunity to share with you some of the fun things that we have been doing at Robinwood that indeed impact the student learning by allowing them to want to, students to come to school. So this year, we had the Rams Play 60 bus come to our school, and they were partnered with Kid Smart. We were the only school in the St. Louis area that had this bus come and visit. We were, we were the only bus for the, excuse me, the school for the entire school year that they were visiting. So it was the first visit for that bus, and we were the only school. That was such an honor for them to come. That occurred on October 21st, and during this time, it was amazing to watch our students interact with Rampage, which was, you know, which is the Rams mascot, and also the tight end, 89 Jerick Cook. He was amazing and so personable with the children. We had two students from each grade level from 4th, 5th, and 6th. They were selected to play a trivia game that was similar to Jeopardy!, and the focus was on healthy lifestyles. So they played these games, and they were, the games were coupled with questions, they had races, banana eating contests, and dressing in a football uniform, which I will tell you was very, very interesting. It was amazing to see the student body cheer on their peers who were trying to put on a size 21 shoe, shoulder pads, jerseys, and other gear. And when I say 21 shoe, I didn't even know there was such a thing. So you would have a, you know, an eight-year-old, I mean, an 11-year-old with this shoe, and then they'd have to run around these cones. And it was just amazing. The finale was Rampage and Jerick Cook hyped by and made some type of contact with every single student in the assembly, every single one. And at the end, some students were able to visit the bus, which outside, if you could see on the picture, it had video playing, excuse me, music playing, the students were able to go in, and in the bottom left-hand corner, you can see that it wasn't just that, students were also exercising. The Play 60 program was partnered with Kid Smart, and Kid Smart is a local organization that ensures that children and their classrooms in the greater metropolitan St. Louis area have basic tools for learning by transferring at no cost the community surplus supplies and merchandise into the hands of teachers for schoolchildren in need. So teachers can volunteer at Kid Smart, and they are able to get items that are given to them at no cost. Another exciting thing that we have that's going, that we have had happen was, we had an Office Depot book presentation. Again, we were selected to receive books from Office Depot. One box was completely filled with the Hunger Games series. Each classroom, upper grade, was able to get at least five or six books. We also had two boxes of supplies that went to the classroom teachers, and also some student supplies. But we also had a Kindle Fire HD that was donated, and we do a map assembly every year, and we recognize students who have scored advanced or proficient on the map as well as should have shown growth. And that Kindle Fire was used as one of our drawings. So that was something that saved us money, and we didn't have to purchase it. It was like a, just a gift given to us. So that, that was one thing that we've had in terms of community involvement. Now, another thing that we're doing, thanks to one of my music teachers, is we have what's called a concert series, the Friday Concert Series, the Lunch Series, and we have over, we have had over several, over the course of time, several students from UMSL who have come and have performed Concert Series during lunchtime. So we've had the stringed instruments, one of our teachers has also played the piano, and during a regular music class, students are taught how to, how to sit and have concert etiquette. And so it's amazing to hear that wonderful music coming to our cafeteria because that means that our voice volumes that were normally up here are down here, and it's very, very pleasant. So that's been a great thing that we've done, and we are very, very appreciative of that, a variety of genres, and we are very thankful again for that because it opens up our children's minds to music. And you can see here, we have, they sit at one part of the cafeteria, and lunch is still occurring, it's normal, they're getting their trays, and they're getting, dumping trays, and sitting down and eating. It's just very pleasant with live music, and they're just in awe to see these musicians And it looks like I am missing... Okay. I suppose that's it, but I have something else I'd like to share with you. With the events that have happened in Ferguson and the unrest, we have a lot of community organizations that really want to help our students and help our schools. And so I have several teachers that have applied for a Donors Choose funding. Are you familiar with Donors Choose? Okay. So I've had 11 teachers funded for projects for Donors Choose, and we're talking totals over thousands and thousands of dollars, from printers to pencils. And so we're thankful for that. It's an online charity, and I'm, it's just amazing how the community at large is willing to help. It's unfortunate the events that caused that to happen, but because of that event, we are getting lots of support from the community. And so, again, I chose to highlight some of our community activities because we're all about rigor, we're all about learning, it's, you know, fast-paced pacing guides, all of that. But our kids need to have fun as well. It's not all about, life's not all about just work, 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 work. It's about building that, that well-rounded child, and these are some activities that we've done that enhance that by giving them a little bit of fun. So, thank you for your time. And again, I would like to thank my Robinwood peeps over there for coming out because I know that you could have easily chosen somewhere else to be, and I appreciate your support. You all are awesome. You know, I, you know I know that you're awesome, but I love you. You guys are great.
Good evening. Next up is Dr. Charlotta Williams, Principal of Berkeley Middle School.
Good evening. All right, so this year, our focus has been leaving our kids home away from home, having them feel that Berkeley is home away from home this year, and so our focus has been So we are focused to build relationships with students, also getting students involved in school activities and classes as much as possible. A lot of our kids come to school, they do work all day, but they also need that extra well-roundedness for them. And so that was one of our focuses. And our one big focus is for our students' voices to be heard, especially in light of what was going on before school started and through the school year. So we have TOP, which is a teen outreach program. We have our students seeing them once a week. It's kind of a health type of class, but it's also a class where they're learning to build relationships, talk about relationship issues. They have opportunities to do community service projects. They're actually required to do 20 hours of community service throughout the school year. This program is taught by two teachers from TOP, which is F Worth, so they have been a great contributor to our staff this year. One of the community projects that we have, our Girls on Track did this year, was giving back. We stood out in the... We stood out in the cold 20-degree weather, passing out water to the marathoners and half marathoners that were running in the morning back in October. We also have our Spirit Council. Our Spirit Council was trained in September by the Department of Justice to help them voice their opinions about Berkeley Middle, to help them voice their opinions about what was going on in our community. Spirit Council does meet once a month with our staff, which consists of a couple of teachers and our counselor. They present their findings and what they would like for Berkeley Middle to expand on or change to me also, once they finish, and then we sit down and we talk about it and figure out how we can make Berkeley Middle better. So we have implemented some of the ideas that they have. One of them were to have a little bit longer passing time, so they can socialize a little bit more in the hallway, but also get to class on time and make sure they have everything that they need. So we have worked on doing that this year. We did Kids Vote with part of, you know, teaching them to voice their opinion, and making sure they understand the whole voting process, and being able to present what they want, and being able to do that in a diplomatic way. Again, our Girls on Track, our focus has really been making sure all of our students are involved in something, not just our 10 or 20 or 30 students involved in the same thing. So we have implemented different things for students to get involved in, and one of them has been Girls on Track. Another, we make sure we do our student-teacher competitions every quarter during our Renaissance assemblies and all of our other assemblies, so the kids enjoy, enjoy competing, not, not just against their peers, but also against us also, which is building that collaboration, that relationship that we have with them. We have our family engagement nights that we are doing along with our PTSO, so we make sure every PTSO night, we do have a family engagement night with this. This was our math night. We've had a reading night, we have map trivia night next month, and so we are focusing on making sure we bring our families also with students in. And then to end with tying this to curriculum a little bit, our eighth-grade EOL teachers have come up with a project of Voices of Ferguson. They're, they're developing and hoping to publish Voices of Ferguson, giving the students voices and reactions and thoughts about Michael Brown. They're writing a narrative of real and imaginative experiences, using effective techniques and relevant descriptive details. The writing idea is growing a living in a changing community, how this has affected their lives, how it will continue to affect their lives later on when they graduate high school and college. And so the kids are writing about this, this is one of their big projects this quarter, and so we're hoping to get it published. All the kids were just writing away for the last few weeks on this, and just writing their own stories and their own experiences. So we're hoping to get this published by the end of the year, so kids can have a copy to take home. And so this was part of, one of those projects, our art teacher talked with the kids during this time and came up with what the kids do to voice their opinions about what's going on, and this is Michael Brown's mom's face, and the kids put, you know, stuff on teardrops for them, and we actually were able to present this to her in December, and she has this So, thank you. I have one staff member here. And that was our staff. We have basketball games tonight, so our staff were, our, all of our basketball games, we have three back-to-back, and they start at late because the other team didn't show up too late, so that's where they are tonight. I would like to thank the board, Dr. Davis, welcome, and that's it.
New Dr. Charleto Williams.
Centralizing Change Competitive Challenge, it'll be Dr. Diggs, and this will be for board information only.
Student leaders from each high school will facilitate Centralizing Change Competitive Challenge in their schools. One of the focus areas in the district strategic plan is school climate. As our students prepare to participate in the 54-mile walking classroom, we're asking our high school students to participate in a centralized competitive challenge for 54 days between the high schools to improve school climate and reduce office referrals. The goal is to assist students in developing social and emotional competencies in the areas of self-awareness, responsible decision-making, to help redirect negative behavior, avoid conflicts, and refocus on learning. Students will use data-informed priorities derived from school discipline reports to make plans and set goals at each high school for a competitive, for a competition in reducing or eliminating problem behaviors. A meeting was held on last week with each one of the high schools. I visited the schools with Addie Richberg from DC and Linda Mackey with the Pen and Pencil Program that's operating in McLeur South Berkeley. We talked about the competitive challenge, and we want our students to understand what's at stake here. We want to make sure that we help them to be competitive with each other at the McLeurs. The students are looking to see which school can reduce the rate of incident by the largest percentage over the 54 days. This is in conjunction with our students going on the walking classroom to Selma. This challenge will provide a platform for students to accept responsibility for behavior and create a productive learning environment. The student leaders for the Centralized Change Competitive Challenge will be invited to attend a youth summit in Arizona during the summer, which is also funded by the National Alliance of Faith and Justice.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Dr. Diggs. Mr. Rich Miller, you're up three times here, it looks like, asking for approval.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, Dr. Davis. I have four items that relate to E-Rate, and E-Rate is the federal funding that helps offset costs for internet access as well as networking equipment. The first item is wireless access points. The district seeks to improve wireless or Wi-Fi services by increasing the number of wireless access points throughout. Funding is being sought through the federal E-Rate program. Alexander Open Systems is the suggested vendor, and the board has received a copy of the bids. We are seeking Board of Education approval for Alexander Open Systems to provide wireless access points if E-Rate funding is approved for an estimated district cost of $60,945.95.
Do I have a... Who would accept the E-Rate wireless access point?
Second?
Right.
Question was made by Ms. Hogshead, second by Mr. Ebert.
Once the E-Rate is approved, how long will it take to implement this?
Actually, it'll happen relatively quickly. In this case, though, as with some of these other items, we'll use our staff to install to save, to save some money, so just how fast we can get them up. And about half the district, we were able to rewire using E-Rate money before, and so classrooms actually have network drops in them that we can use for them, but roughly half the districts, it'll take a little longer, but it'll happen quickly as soon as we get the funding.
Will this be a summer project?
Potentially not. The E-Rate cycle starts July 1, but a lot of times for this equipment, we won't get approvals until into first semester.
Okay.
But they'll notify us as we go along, we'll have updates.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor of the E-Rate Wireless Access Points approval, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Hearing none, ayes have it. E-Rate Network Switches.
The district seeks to improve network services by replacing switches. Funding is being sought through the federal E-Rate program. Alexander Open Systems is the suggested vendor. The board has received a copy of the bids. We are seeking Board of Education approval for Alexander Open Systems to provide network switches if E-Rate funding is approved for an estimated district cost of $246,212.27.
And who would replace the switches?
Second.
Question was made by Ms. Hogshead, second by Mr. Ebert. Any discussion on network switches? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Hearing none, ayes have it.
So E-Rate Wide Area Network, the district seeks to continue providing connectivity between all locations with a wide area network or WAN. Funding is being sought through the federal E-Rate program, however, this service is necessary regardless of whether we're receiving funding assistance. Windstream is the suggested vendor, and the board has received a copy of the bids. We are seeking Board of Education approval for Windstream to provide the district WAN for an estimated five-year cost of $237,375. The district would be responsible for the total cost of $1,582,500 if E-Rate funding is not approved.
I hope that we do the area network E-Rate.
Right.
Instead, if it's not approved, we're on the hook for a million five.
Yes.
What's the possibility of that?
This falls in, so E-Rate funding falls into two categories, and this would be what they call Category 1. Typically, you receive this type of funding relatively straightforward, the service like this. For the equipment, like switches and access points, they're called Category 2, it's a little more difficult, but it's, it's a high probability, but I mentioned that we are on the hook, because it's, it's a cost that we could incur if we did not get funding, but we'll probably get funded more quickly for that, and the probability is much higher. I mean, we've received this funding multiple years in a row for this type of thing.
And if we're denied, will the total cost be an upfront expense?
It is not. It's, it's a monthly bill, it's like a utility bill.
It's spread out over how?
It's five years.
Five years.
Just another question, with all of these mentioned, 15% capital bond funds, is that money dependent on the passage of Proposition I, or do we have that money already?
So in this case, this would be, this particular one would be general fund or utility fund. The access points and switches would be capital. It's dependent, I mean, the answer is, it's dependent on capital money, even as Medrusik could speak to it more directly, but as long as I've been here, that's been bond money. Even if we are approved, let's say we're approved for this and there's an issue, we do not have the funding, we do not have to make these purchases, it's just, it's dependent on us having that funding as well, our 15%.
My question is, maybe it's to Ms. Medrusik, do we have that money now, or are we depending on Proposition I?
Mr. Medrusik.
Which means it's a good selling point to encourage support for Proposition I, because if we want this modern internet, everything, state testing laws to be done online, I mean, it's something we've got to have if we're going to run our schools the way we want to.
It's definitely...
I think it's a good selling point for Proposition I.
That's accurate.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the E-Rate Wide Area Network approval, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Hearing none, ayes have it.
So E-Rate Cellular, the district seeks to continue providing cellular service. Funding is being sought through the federal E-Rate program, however, this service again is necessary regardless of receiving funding assistance. AT&amp;T is the suggested vendor, and the board has received a copy of the bids. We are seeking Board of Education approval for AT&amp;T to provide the cellular service for an estimated one-year cost of $43,900.
Who would accept the E-Rate cellular?
Second.
Question was made by Ms. Hogshead, second by Mr. Ebert. Who's our current carrier?
Right now, we're with T-Mobile, and actually, in this case, T-Mobile did not bid.
I had, my house was a dead zone, so...
Yeah, okay. We've had some challenges this year, I will say that.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the E-Rate cellular, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Hearing none, ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. McMillan, talk about piano.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Root, Dr. Davis. This evening, we're requesting the addition of a position for our three high schools. This would be an additional part-time piano accompanying us, and this person would help to ease the load of second semester between the concert and the contest seasons. The cost of this position would be roughly $3,175.
I believe higher than part-time piano.
Second.
Question was made by Ms. Hogshead, second by Mr. Schrader. Any discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment that people may be somewhat confused with the contest and concert season, but in the springtime, you end up with Allstate Orchestra, Allstate Choir, and so forth and so on. I had a couple of my children, just about all my children, participating in it, and those are like the walk at Selma, a kind of a life-changing experience for some of our kids, that they get to go to Allstate or something like that, and it's definitely worth the money to make those opportunities for our kids.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Hearing none, ayes have it. Thank you. Ms. Medrusik, for the preliminary budget for the fiscal year 2015, 2016?
Good evening, Board of Education and the community. I apologize, I have, because everybody else has, so I'm sorry that I sound like a frog. But I'll try to get through this. I'm here today just to give an update on the preliminary budget. We're about halfway through the school year, and I was thinking about this the other night, how my, how this year has changed. Last year, I was standing up here, and I was sitting in the audience, and every time all of the good things that our students were doing, they were coming up, and they were doing all these great programs and doing all these good things, and I was sitting in my chair, because at this time last year, we were trying to cut $5 million out of the budget, and every single one of those programs that students came up for, I was thinking, we just cut that, we just cut that, we just cut that, and it was heartbreaking for me. So I'm very happy to come to the board this year with different results, and, and I wanted to thank again the community, because without your support for the tax levy, we would not be in this position. I would still be sitting there heartbroken, because we couldn't provide our students with these opportunities. So I wanted to thank you for passing the 50-cent tax increase, because that has turned our, our budget around. And I also wanted to thank our staff, because our staff, I did a worldwide tour last year and talked to the staff about how we need to conserve energy, how we need to, you know, make these cuts, and the staff really jumped in and have really done a great job of conserving energy, and, and they're doing a lot of things and being very creative, and I appreciate that a lot. And thank you, Melinda, too, for all the things that you're doing with, with getting resources from outside to help provide, you know, funding for your program. So I do appreciate that, and I wanted to thank you guys, too, for that, because today, I'm very happy to present a little bit rosier picture than it has been in the past, and we're on a good roll, and I hated, I was always Debbie Downer, we always had these great things, and then I'd come up and say, this is really bad. So I'm thankful that I don't have to do that today with our new superintendent, so... I wanted to revisit last month, I came to the board, and you approved a budget revision. We had an additional amount of revenue because of the 50-cent tax increase, and also because of some sales tax increase, we had an additional $5.5 million added of revenue to our, to our existing 14, 15 budget. And then we also added some expenditures, because we passed that tax increase, we were able to bring back some other programs that we had to cut, and so we had to, so that the board approved $982,000 more of expenditures. So the final budget summary looks, we're ending up in actually a pretty good spot. We are actually bringing in more revenue this year than expenditures, and that's great, which is going to bring our fund balance up to 16, 15 percent, and that's thank you all. So as you can see, last year, if you can remember this, this slide I had last year, the fund balances projected were supposed to be going, were going down, and it was very troubling. Thankfully, with the added revenue, we're on the upward trend, and so that's very, that's very good. Those are our fund balances. Now, I'm going to talk about the preliminary budget, and what this is, is just an update to kind of give you a picture of what, what our budget's going to look like for, for next year. I want to, this is a very, very preliminary budget. We're actually doing this a month ahead of time, so that we can end our negotiations early, and so I don't have any information right now. What I'm going on is hearsay, things I hear that are going on in the legislative world. I don't have assessments yet, this is a reassessment year from the county, so I don't have those numbers in yet, so I don't really have an educated guess, I'm just basing this on, and really, I don't have history right now either, because things are so volatile right now. So this is very preliminary, and it could change dramatically, but right now, this is where I got. And I wanted to just kind of give a recap. We get, our, our funding comes from several different sources. The big wedge on the, on the side over there is our local funding, and that's the most, the majority of money that we receive, and that's from our local taxes. Then we do receive a little bit about from the county. The rest of our money comes from the state. We get about 9.5% from federal, and then just a little bit of sliver... We get about 9.5% from federal, and then just a little bit of sliver is the other. So local taxes, the assumptions that I put into the preliminary budget, we did see a decrease of property assessments, or we haven't, but I'm assuming, I talked to the county, and they said that because of the damage to the property on the West Florissant Corridor, we are going to see a decrease of assessment, but they said to only do about 2.5%. They were trying to be optimistic about it, and they really didn't know what to tell me at the time, too. Now, that might change whenever they go out and actually do the assessments, but at the time of the meeting with the county assessors, they told me to use a 2.5% decrease to the assessment. However, we are noticing, our December 31 numbers came in, and that gives us the numbers of our assessments, and those are true numbers that I can look at. And so we did see an increase of personal property. So that, and because gas is going down, people are going out and buying more things, the gas prices are down, and people are feeling more confident, and I've seen a lot of new cars on the highways. And so state taxes across the state are going up, and they've been trending upwards. And so I expect to see another 2.5% increase. We also have a couple of projects that are located in our tip area, and those are going to bring an additional revenue. They're tipped, so they don't pay personal, they don't pay the tax, but they do pay on their equipment, and so we will see some increased tax revenue from that. But, so with the drop of assessment, but with the raise of assessment, I think we're only going to see a net loss of $132,000. Again, this is very preliminary. Prop C's sales tax, though, is very encouraging. Like I said, people are going out and buying things. There's more consumer, you know, they're feeling more confident with the economy. And so there has been a 3.5% increase from the prior year state budget, I'm saying state sales tax. And so I put that 3.5% increase into next year. So that gives us a sales tax revenue of an additional $351,000 to the budget. And then some of our other local revenue, delinquent tax, it always seems to remain flat. Last year, people must have paid their taxes a little bit more. We might have received some settlements from some of the protests, but we had a better year last year, but the taxes are not coming, the delinquent taxes are not coming in as they did last year. So I assume them to be flat to the prior year. Surcharge, we will also see about a $60,000 increase about that due to that. And then the food service revenue is going to go down about $300,000, and that's because those are what we charge the students for their lunches and their, for their lunches. And this year, the district's been able to provide free lunches and breakfast to our students, and they're no longer paying that out of their pocket. So that revenue will decrease by $300,000. So if you look at the historical local revenue, you can see we were on that downward trend, and it was not looking good, but I'm estimating that the revenue is going to come in a little bit better, so it's a lot more optimistic for the next year. County tax revenue, we just get a small percentage of that, about $1.7 million, and that just comes from fines, that people take, pay fines for their tolls, and if they get toll, fines and things like that. And then state assessed utilities is the taxes on the utilities. So that one always remains flat. The history just shows that it's not something that increases a lot, so I just kept that flat. And then the state revenue, we should see about $43.78 million coming in, and that is from the foundation formula, which is made of two parts, basic formula and classroom trust. Then also, we get money for transportation, parents as first teachers, and early childhood special ed. Now, the largest portion of that is from the state foundation formula, and I kept that flat this year, because there's a big controversy with the legislature right now. Every year, there's a controversy with the legislature and school funding. They passed a House bill last year, House bill 1689, and it was supposed to be to help the early education, and it was going to provide early education funding for the unaccredited students that had, for the unaccredited preschool students that were on free and reduced lunches. However, there at the end, they tacked on another clause that districts be fully funded, that we're on the hold harmless. There's a, it's a term, there's people that are on the formula, and people are on hold harmless, and we're a hold harmless district. So if this ends up going through, we'll see an additional $1.3 million in our state revenue. But I didn't want to add that in there just yet, because there's other districts like Hazelwood and Rockwood that are going to lose a million and $2 million if this actually goes through. So there's a lot of things with the legislature that they're going to have to work out before the end of, before they actually vote on it. So I just kept that flat right now, but I don't want to count on that money in case it changes. So as you can see, the state revenue has went down because the state has not fully funded the formula. However, you know, with these, with keeping it flat, they started to, we have a little bit more funding for this year, and I just kept it flat for next year. And then the federal revenue will bring in $9.6 million, and that's just our free and reduced lunch program, our breakfast, and then our Title I, Title II, those types of federal brands. So the free meal and, the free and reduced meal and breakfast, those reimbursements are going to go down a little bit. We had a big population of transfer students come in last year, and that brought in additional revenue for those funds, but we don't have that same population. So we are going to see a decrease in our federal revenue, just because those students are no longer with us. And then the other non-current revenue is about $1.2 million. We do receive money from homeless transportation that other districts pay for us to transport students, and then also the transfer students that we are having for next year. Again, with the uncertainty of enrollment, I just kept that at $1 million. So now I'm going to talk about the expenditures and the assumptions that I made in the budget. I kept the salaries and staffing in the preliminary budget at status quo at this time. We're not through with negotiations, so I really don't know where to even put that. So I just kept that status quo with the staffing and with the salaries, too. I did know of some reductions that we are making through attrition, and so I went ahead and added those, because those were part of my, our budget cuts from last year. Also, indications from the first quarter of our insurance review are training a higher amount of claims. Again, we had a couple really good years, and now we're on that upward climb. And so I put a 5% increase to the insurance to the budget, because I anticipate that the district's going to have to pay a little bit more this year. And then the affordable healthcare is going to add part-time employees, if they are eligible, if they work 30 hours or more, onto our insurance plan, and so that's going to cost us about $800,000 more. And then I also added $500,000 extra for textbook adoption, because we've not been able to buy a lot of the textbook curriculum that we need, and so we need to start building that back into the budget. So I added $500,000 back in for that. So for our budget summary, you can see the revenue and expenditures are pretty much the same. You know, we're actually budget neutral right now, and that's a great thing. That extra revenue really did help us. So we'll have an ending balance, fund balance of 15.8%, which is a lot better than it was last year, actually. So that's really good. I did not add the capital and bond expenditures, and we've been talking about all night about Prop I. Currently, we are funding our capital expenditures, and those are things to pay for roofing, boilers, technology, bus, school buses. There's all kinds of structural types of things that we pay for capital money with that. We cannot pay salaries out of it. We cannot pay, you know, for purchase services or materials. It's only for capital items. And so I did not include that in there. If this pass does not pass, the $31 million, then we are going to have to borrow from the operating fund to fund some of these programs. We're definitely going to have to cut back on our technology, cut back on our infrastructure, and that will really hurt the students in the classroom. So it's very important that we get this bond election passed. If it doesn't pass, then we will have, we'll have to move approximately $4 million over to the capital fund, and then we will be in a $4 million deficit again. So I'm really trying hard not to do that. I hope that we can rally and get this bond issue passed. So I'm done. Does anybody have any questions? This was for information only.
I have a question regarding the student transfer money. How's Riverview Gardens doing financially?
Well, actually, if this, they're slated to get more money, too, next year than a million, or was close to a million, too. So, I mean, I think that they're doing okay. They've been working really hard. They were not in the situation that Normandy was financially.
I was going to say, Normandy is serious.
Right.
Do we know anything about them?
And we don't, I don't. I have not heard about them financially, but Riverview was, I mean, they're slowly losing money, but they had a, they had a really good grasp on it before that they had to start paying that tuition. So, so far, they're solid, and I haven't heard anything, so.
One thing, I spoke with Councilman Mark Byrne, the Ferguson Council, and he's very optimistic regards to the rebuilding in Ferguson along West Florissant. I know there's some businesses who are still on the fence if they're going to do that or not, but some have committed, but there's also outside interests coming in that, he called me, he couldn't give me details, but he just said he's really excited about it. He thinks it's going to be great for the entire community. But there seems to be now a more positive attitude about the rebuilding, and probably more so now than what was existing before. So I think that's going to be fantastic for the district.
Right. I agree.
And he's talking about tip stuff, though.
Well, it's still, it's...
It still sells tax, and you can buy stuff, and things like that.
Right. And it brings people back to the community.
Yeah, he said that he wanted to, I guess the city wanted to come to us at some point to make a presentation about some of these initiatives that are coming up. They want to make sure that the school district's on the board. That's all I have. I have no other information, but he did say he was looking for that.
And a lot of times, too, with the tips, you can work with the vendor, with the company that's coming in or whoever they're doing, and they will do something else instead of giving you, you know, property tax money. They will give you computers or give you money, funding for programs and things like that, which is why it's good that we have the foundation, because that gives us an avenue to take that money in, so.
Glad you put in that part about what happened to Prop I to pass. When I was presenting the FFNAA the other night, I brought that up, that how important it was for Prop I to pass in order to not touch our operating funds, so that we don't have to go back into the cut load.
Right.
I do want to say, this is my fourth year on the board, and the first time we've had good news on the board.
Yes.
And I want to thank you for that, so.
My question is, do you project in this budget having to borrow again for salaries at the end of the year like we always do, or not?
With the balances, if, right now, because we're balanced and because there, we were right at the cusp of having to borrow this last time, so I think that'll take us just right above that we might not have to borrow. In the past two years, we've had to take a, borrow against our taxes so that we could get through the month of December, and this year, it was more towards more getting closer to November. So hopefully, if we have our balances high enough, we won't have to do that.
Any other questions? Ms. Lauren.
I believe we adjourn into executive session.
Another second? Question is made by Ms. Hogshead, second by Mr. Schrader.
Mr. Ebert. Right. Brown. Right. Sherman. Aye. Ms. Hogshead.
Aye.